12th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting at 7:00 PM. Start off with roll call.
Dennis Feraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Bethany Cawley, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street, Marquette Township, Trow Beach Park.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Building Administrator, Norwood Road.
Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve second agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Um, and this from the previous meeting of January 22nd, 2025.
Got one correction, under others present, um,
Yep.
It should be John Leighton and then not.
I thought maybe Doc changed his name.
Incognito.
And I had a question too, it said, um, for signature for me as the planning commission secretary and I didn't know if that changed yet or not.
Who is, uh, I wasn't here for that.
I'm the secretary now.
Did he?
Okay. Bethany's vice president.
Got you.
Or vice chairperson.
We will make that adjustment and feel free to approve as well.
I'll make a motion to approve for those changes. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, public comment, anyone wishing to make comment now can come forward unless you're waiting for a special agenda item or the public hearing, you can wait until then. Seeing no one, we will move on to six A, new business, special use permit public hearing number 021225-1. Proposed duplex residential used to be located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. The address is 1953 Warner Street in Marquette, the parcel tax ID is 520832002500. Yeah, kind of Phil and Lee's Homes, PO Box 218 in Wells. Jason?
Thank you, so we've been working with Phil and Lee's Homes for almost a year, I would think, um, on a rather innovative project to bring a two-family home, they use some terminology in their application as being a multifamily, which it is, I guess, it's, but we consider multifamily to be three or more, so this is simply a duplex or a two-family type dwelling. And, uh, we do allow that in the urban residential district, which this is, uh, in the yellow zoning there. And we allow that by special use permit. However, there are some caveats to that in that, um, the structure needs to be at least, uh, each individual dwelling needs to be at least 800 square feet in size. And the lot needs to be 12,000 square feet in size. And I think if you were to look at this, because it is a, um, it's a duplex, a side-by-side setting, it's very similar to the size and scale of other homes in the area. So we do.
You say 12,000 square feet for the lot?
For the lot size.
Okay, thank you.
So, we're gonna get to that in a minute.
Okay.
So as proposed, um, the structure size is 2280 square feet, which means each unit is 1140 square feet. And the lot size, as it sits now, so I'm gonna go through the rest of this, but I'm also gonna have a condition of approval recommendation if this is recommended to be approved. And I'll explain the reason why here in a minute. But essentially, uh, Phil and Lee's makes manufactured homes and they're looking to kind of make a splash with one of their newer model units in our community. Um, so this is the plot plan here, these are the proposed boundary, uh, property boundary lines. This here is the actual, uh, unit itself, so 30 by 76 in total. Um, and this is the property of Dean, or David and Jean Hallenden, which are your parents, right? And luckily, they own pretty much half the block or more, I would say, in that area, which comes into play. Because as you see here, there's an existing home to the east that's all within nine, um, uh, feet of the property line, so there's nothing wrong with that per se. But they are gonna make some adjustments to the property boundaries, um, to clear some stuff up. And so I just got off the phone with Mike Molewski about 20 minutes ago, um, to inquire about that because in the packet it says that the survey information would have been sent via email. We did not receive that yet, but they're still working on that, Mike's working on it now. But essentially what's gonna happen is they're gonna move this property boundary to the west. And then they're gonna acquire, because all this property, these three properties are all owned by the same entity, except for you guys own this one to the east, right? So this property boundary is gonna be moved to the east to alleviate this encroachment here, to make that setback the way it should be. And then, as this is on our county equalization data, it's only 10,000 square feet in size. And if you remember, per the ordinance, it needs to be 12,000. So they're gonna acquire from, they're just gonna do a boundary adjustment swap, they're gonna move this line to the west, um, and then the whole thing's gonna move to the west to accommodate that. So if it is approved tonight, that's my recommendation that that be submitted and approved prior to getting your building approved, okay? And there was some information included in the packet, they actually provided a very detailed packet, but here's, you know, kind of the floor plan. For your more for your information, this is more of a height and bulk density kind of thing, uh, for the planning commission to consider tonight, it's the use itself. Which is ironic because, you know, housing is something that we desperately need in the community. Um, you know, if you're talking to the steering committee, we're in the middle of a master plan update right now, we're discussing ways that we can affect, uh, affordable housing. And we think that zoning is a big one. So whether it's increasing density or allowing, let's say duplexes by permitted right, by right. Uh, where it's not a special use permit, you don't have to go through this process, but, um, as it is now, it's a special use. So, um, go through some of the, uh, photos that were provided, seems to be, I mean, I would live there, it's a nice fit and finish. And you can kind of see how the one on the top picture on the right and the top picture here, uh, would go together to form the two. And I suspect, obviously, it would come off the wheels and be planted on a sub, a foundation and hooked up to our utility system, so. You know, I really don't have much beyond that, it seems to be fairly cut and dry. Do you think this is an appropriate use in this area? There's not much development on the south side of Warner. If you remember, we've had some, uh, this area is obviously pretty wet here, um, there is a intermittent stream that runs through here, it's shown on their, um, it's shown on their plot plan, but it doesn't show up on any of our wetland or, you know, DNR intermittent streams, it's, it's probably something that's fairly intermittent.
Will it be infilled?
I'm sorry?
Is it gonna, is the stream gonna be?
No, it's not proposed to be disturbed at all.
Okay.
Um, so along with that, we did receive one email from an adjacent neighbor Denise Mackey, I don't know if she's here tonight, I don't think so. Um, do you want me to read that into the record for you?
Yes.
Um, I'm not in favor of granting a special use permit for a duplex to be built at 1953 Warner Street. Our home was purchased 34 years ago in a single-family residential zone, area for the purpose of long-term residency to raise a family and other stable families in a quiet neighborhood setting. Uh, changing the area from a residential to multifamily zoning, uh, which we're not proposing to do that, um, would see our property values decline, noise increase, and safety risks with transient renters. I guess notation, this is not an application for a short-term or vacation rental, this is a long-term rental proposal.
Is that part of the, uh, is that actually part of the, uh, special use permit application?
It's, it's not.
Okay.
If you're asking if they're applying for a vacation rental on top of this, they're not.
No, but I mean, in this particular application, does it specify that this is gonna be a long-term lease situation?
It doesn't, it's implied because you're not applying for a, uh, a short-term rental, so if they wanted to do that, you can clarify that, how, how you see fit.
Well, we, uh, uh, could that be a condition?
Yes.
That we would impose on this?
And a point of clarification.
Okay, thank you.
Um, with transient renters, it would also attract other builders to apply for special use multi-duplex permits. As is some single-family homes in my area are being used as rentals and there has been a notable increase in noise and traffic. The majority of tenants have no consideration for homeowners in my area. Township has designated areas zoned for multifamily duplex buildings. Multifamily homes are for the sole purpose of income for the owners to rent to tenants who come and go with no regard for people who are committed to the area. My vote is no for a special use permit at 1953 Warner Street, thank you Denise M. Mackey, 445 Miski Avenue. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, you have the property owner's representative here, you have the, uh, home designer and, you know, their counterpart here as well. Um, as this is a public hearing, please feel free to, to do what you will.
So, so Miski is the street that connects to?
It's the north-south connection to Warner.
And so that, this house of the person writing the letter is facing Miski, right?
All of Miski.
Mm-hmm.
They're not on the corner either, they are, they would be south of the corner, a house, one house south of the corner house.
Okay.
That's a busy intersection. Unbelievable.
Well, right, because it's a, because it's a thorough way of staying off the highway, we, we know why it is, that's why we, that could be why it was designed that way, to keep traffic off the highway.
Yeah, if you go way back through some of the old planning data, there was actually a plan to take Warner all the way over to.
Into the, into the city.
In Plallin, yeah.
Which would still be a nice idea.
It's viable.
Mm-hmm. So, okay, so she faces a busy street today. And it's a bit far from where the proposed. So.
Any questions, Mark, Jason? Yeah, I have another question, so, uh, I know this is quite a bit different than the Renovari plant unit development that we approved. But one of the issues that we were concerned about in Renovari was there were no storage spaces. So, uh, it would impose that as a condition, uh, on approval, that each unit would have a storage space, something like you'd buy at Menards or whatever, do you remember that?
I, I do.
Okay, so, uh, that, could that be a condition that we could impose?
I guess it could, Danny, but in my opinion there, this isn't, um, the same scale as what Renovari is, I, I don't think.
Well, no, but where are people gonna put their bicycles and their, where are individual tenants?
I would ask the applicant.
But that could be, that could be a condition that the planning commission could impose for approval?
I think it's borderline, but probably, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So I just, I have another question, Jason, um, the township does not allow mobile homes, is that correct? Travel trailer type things to live in, I, I seem to remember that we stopped that.
No.
No.
Manufactured homes are permitted, what zoning did, and this happened throughout the course of many areas in Michigan, is they made each wall, uh, be required to be 20 feet in size or in length, right? So that basically gets rid of any single wide or double wide type of homes.
And that's still in effect?
It is, yeah, yeah, we have to meet the minimum requirements, this meets those requirements, we've been working with them for a, a period of time to get something that meets our ordinance so that we can bring it to you confidently.
So I would call this a manufactured home, okay, like, like Florida has many manufactured homes, but just so we're clear on that, because someone's gonna ask me that out in the public about the trailer concept, okay, so it's the 20-foot?
It's not gonna be, uh, it's not a trailer, it's two halves of a home brought together.
I, I know. I, I know, but, um, long-term residents kind of remember some of those things, so I can just say to them, it's not what you think it is, it has met our regulation. Okay, just wanna be clear.
And HUD, and the county, and the state, yeah, it's all spelled out in the back.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Jason, did I make a comment?
Uh, it's up to the chair, really, it's not my meaning to run, but.
Yeah, just, we'll, we'll open it up in just a sec here. Um, but, and I think also with the mobile homes, they have to be on wheels to be considered a mobile home, or does that have to be wheels on them?
Um, yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't have that answer right now, I guess, I don't know if it's pertinent to this proposal either.
Okay. Not that it matters in this case, but.
Yeah, I'm happy to try to do the definition tomorrow morning.
Okay. Anything else for Jason, or we open it up?
Um, just a question, um, just to address the letter, she mentioned safety risks with transient renters, have we had anything reported that we've had any safety risks of any?
No, and there's, there's really no short-term rentals in that area either, so these would be long-term renters. I have a feeling that I know the house she's talking about, which a couple of years ago had some college kids move in. Um, and they actually did some improvements to the house, and I don't, I believe they graduated and moved on, so that might be one of their issues. We had to police some trash and things that were outside, but they were compliant and, but they're, you know, they're college kids, so. Big trucks, stuff like that.
Anyone else?
I don't have any questions, but I, you know, Danny did bring up a good concern about storage and, you know, you've got lawn mowers, you're gonna have to cut the grass, or you're gonna put the lawnmower, um, you know, bicycle, again, bicycles, um, maybe grills or, or whatever, kids' toys, um, so. Maybe that it's, it's on a slab, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, um, you bring it in, it comes off from its wheels, it's set on a slab. Um, it looks like a, a very nice, very nice unit that you're, that you're proposing. But storage, uh, you know, that's a viable thing, because, you know, nobody wants to look at everybody else's stuff laid out all over the place, and we are trying to address light and stuff being just, you know, like snowmobiles park there all year long or something not running, so. I think that is a viable concern, so maybe they can address that. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, why don't we open the public hearing then at 7:18? Anyone wishing to come forward? Can you come forward now and state your name and address, please?
My name is Sarah McLennethan, I'm at 810 Ontario Avenue. Um, it's not necessarily right by our house, but I was just curious, imparted my ignorance, because I wasn't attended in the last meeting. Uh, you've mentioned that it is affordable housing, how affordable are we talking, was, has that been established?
Well, this is a public hearing, so, uh, public comment, period, so you're just supposed to talk to us, where it's your turn to say whatever you want, and we're not actually supposed to respond, but in this case, I'll just say, I don't know what the price points are for the rental. I would say that, uh, it's probably gonna be less than a single-family home would be to rent, you know what I mean? So I don't know if it's gonna be necessarily affordable. I would assume it is because it's a duplex and not a, um, but I'm sure the, it'll be a market rate for a rental in the area.
Sure.
We just need more housing units, period.
Right, absolutely, I agree.
As a college student, uh, you can attest to that.
Yeah, I agree, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And perhaps they can answer that question.
Right. Anyone else?
Good evening, I'm Carrie Bartel-Petrin, I'm with Phil and Lee's.
I'm sorry, what is your name, ma'am?
My name is Carrie Bartel-Petrin, I can, I can give you my card afterwards if that's helpful. Um, I wanted to, I guess, make just a quick comment, the suggestion of storage is excellent, and I appreciate that feedback. While there is decent storage within the interior of the dwelling, bikes and lawn mowers and kids' toys, definitely something to address. So I will work with the homeowner to consider some options for that, um, because by all means, we wanna keep this a very good-looking property, um, and storage is definitely a good idea. So I very much appreciate that, that idea. To address your, your thought, Linda, as far as talking to the community, we are more than happy to provide you some, I guess, for the back of, lack of a better term, talking points. So you can share the difference between a mobile home, actually, let me rephrase, a trailer, a mobile home, a manufactured home, a modular home, like what all of those look like, um, and where this one lands, and that's something that we can, would absolutely provide to you.
Perfect.
And I don't know if it's worth putting out there, if you ever have someone who has a concern, send them to us. Um, we love talking to people about what we do and the impact that we can help with, you know, housing. So if it's, if it takes a little pressure off of you to have a conversation, uh, we have a full team that this is what we do and what we love, so we love talking about it too, so. I will, if it's something that you feel necessary as a board, um, to have an understanding of the long-term rental goals of the homeowner that we're working with, by all means, I feel that they would be more than happy to provide their goals with this rental property.
Do you know what they are?
I do not, I know that it's not the intention of short-term, like Airbnb-type rental, uh, that's not the goal that we have had with them, that this is going to be something that they hope to see very long-term rentals in, or renters in, um, as far as, that's, that's been my working knowledge with them for the past three years.
So your, your position, uh, your relationship is, you're, you're a representative of the manufacturer?
Yeah, so I'm the lead home consultant for the project, Jeff is our construction coordinator. I'm basically our direct liaison with the homeowner who owns the property, who's contracted with us to build, to, to build and set the house. Um, and I'm representing them essentially, because they're not available to be here today, so.
So, uh, if, if there was a condition imposed on the approval, if the commissioners approve this, if there was a commi, uh, condition imposed on approval of this, that there be a storage shed for each unit placed outside the unit, obviously, this is something you think could be accomplished?
Oh, I think so, absolutely, I think they would be absolutely open to it.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and with that, I guess I would just welcome any other questions that you all have, and we thank you for your time, so.
Okay, as long as you're up there, let's see if anybody else has any questions right now, while you're standing there.
No, I'd just like to say that we have a, I live in Oak Hill Estates, and we have a Phil and Lee's home, as you're going up Oak Hill on the left-hand side, and it's a beautiful home.
Thank you.
It fits right in to the aesthetics of the subdivision.
Thank you, and that is our goal with this project as well, and it's to hopefully change the minds of some, of maybe the thinking of what a manufactured home is, and this is what they are.
That's greatly changed over time, I lived in real estate for many years, and that's all changed, and that old mentality needs to be left in the past.
We're working.
I mean, it's two-by-six construction, right?
Yeah, yep, drywall throughout.
Yeah, there's a lot of houses that are existing today in the township that are still two-by-four construction, you know, so this is even better built.
Uh, ma'am, when do you anticipate that these units will be installed on the property?
So we're gonna have a decent amount of site work that needs to happen before we bring these, before we bring the unit up here. Um, I think our goal is, and Jeff, you might be able to help, I think we're kind of shooting for like a July-August, July-August timeframe of having a house, or the, the unit on the property. Um, as far as when it will be available for renting and finally wrapped up, that's yet to be determined, um, until we can actually break ground and Mother Nature decides to shift gears, so.
And when you say you'll, you'll communicate with the homeowners, the concern that this be used for a, a long-term lease rental rather than, uh, short-term rental, uh, would you be willing to communicate the results of that communication back to our, um, zoning administrator, Mr. McCarthy?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And is this going to be, this, this will be on a slab with a few rows of blocks on there, I'm assuming?
So the plan for this is to set it on the concrete slab, so it's gonna be a six-inch frost-protected slab. Um, the wheels will, wheels and axles will be removed, and then a permanent perimeter blocking will be installed, so it will look like it has a true foundation underneath the home. Yet the home is, the, the home's not actually gonna be supported by its, its weight, will not be supported by that foundation, so. Um, it will have piers, if you will, of stacked block underneath it, and it will have a fire barrier separation under this, the home itself, uh, because it is considered a duplex, so.
Would these be, uh, would this be a natural gas in terms of cooking and heating, or is it gonna be all electric, or what do you do?
Uh, I do believe it has a gas range and a gas furnace, um, and the homeowner, I believe it is already prepped for electric, should they want to switch out a electric range for the gas range.
So do you have any of these already on-site at different locations, or is this all new?
Brand-new, this is the first one we've set, um, but it's not, uh, new that we've never seen it before. This unit is actually stored at our overflow lot in Delta County, so if anyone would like to tour it, um, I can double-check with the homeowner, and I don't feel that they would have a concern with us walking you through it. These duplex units have been gaining more popularity in southern states, um, because of the affordable housing concerns that the entire country is facing. These types of units have become very, very popular in kind of our southern great plain states, if you will, like Ohio, Indiana. This house actually came up out of a factory in Indiana, um, and it was moved up to a builder that we work with in Wisconsin. They use this as a tour unit and kind of a show model, because they are now retrofit to build homes like this. Um, because there's such a need for this in Wisconsin and Minnesota and Michigan, um, which is the states that they cover through their Wisconsin factory. So, um, this will be the first duplex unit that we have installed, um, but our entire team has been dedicated to learning exactly what needs to happen, and we've been doing what we do for about 76 years, so it's definitely not the first house we've set, um, and definitely set many duplexes of this size. Um, not a ton of them, but a few of them, so.
Would you be able to explain the difference between a mobile home and a modular home?
Yeah, absolutely, so, traditionally thinking, your manufactured homes is what we call them now. Um, HUD stepped in, in, we'll just go with the late 70s, to create a set of parameters that they wanted to see their homes be built by. So in the late 70s, the phrase "trailer" kind of went away, and they went with the idea of manufactured housing. It's the idea that there's a set of very strict parameters for the electrical, for the insulation, for the construction of the home. Two-by-four interior, or sorry, two-by-four exterior walls is actually the minimum standard for HUD. We do two-by-six because it's more similar to what most of our site-built homes are gonna be like. Um, but basically, the Department of Housing regulates how this house is built, so that's why we call it a manufactured home. Mobile homes, trailers, that's basically anything, I think it might be 1996 and older, is considered a mobile home or a trailer. Anything 96 and newer is considered a manufactured home, so. Um, very strict guidelines, these units have to be delivered to a property as a self-contained unit, which means that it has to have a minimum level of insulation, floor, wall, and ceilings. It has to have a specific roof truss system that's been pre-approved by the federal government. It has to have a efficient furnace, it has to have a water heater, it has to be available and ready to be essentially plugged in when it gets on the property. And very rarely are we able to make any changes, to remove things and make it less efficient, it's actually quite the opposite, that we are pushed in the direction of making these homes more functional and efficient and affordable, so.
So do they get, I'll, I'll say tied down? So that those wonderful hurricane winds don't?
You betcha, yes, absolutely, so that is part of our installation process, is that we do what's called block level. So that is part of our installation process, is that we do what's called block level and tie-down. So we pull off those axles and the wheels, we recycle them. Blocks are going to be stacked up underneath the home, and then we tie down the home. These units all, it's going to actually be tied down independently. Even though it will be married together along that middle barrier, the marriage wall, it will be nicely secured to the ground. So much though, that most people, if you didn't see this house come onto this property and get installed, you would never know that it wasn't built right there from day one, so. So if we ever get a hurricane, we'll be good.
You just never know. You don't say never anymore, anywhere. Yeah, I, I think the federal government stepped in and-
Yes.
Did some stuff with that.
Yeah. Yeah, and the, the manufactured homes have the most stringent and the strictest regulations that we have to follow, not just us, but our builder partners, the guidelines for you as a municipality, like they're, it's very well-organized and thought-out, so, yeah.
I have another question. So each one of these halves, A half and the B half, could actually stand alone as an, as an independent house?
Yes, it is actually, and it's titled separately. So with a manufactured home, you have a title, which some folks will actually retire the title to permanently affix it to the property. In this one, you actually will have two titles, and they're fully separated. So utilities function separate, two furnaces, two water heaters, two electric panels, two services coming in, so they can operate independently.
So when these two are joined, are they joined flush? Or are they, is there a space of air in between the, how does that work?
So they will be joined flush. There will be a fire barrier, and I do not have the specifics of it. That's something that would be more from Jeff and the construction team and Phil, one of our owners. But it will have the fire barrier in a separation in case there were an issue on one side that it would not pass through to the secondary unit. But they will be met together right at the marriage line. The only point of actual, I guess I would say like, permanent finishing would actually be the roof line. That ridge, the cap that's going to be on the very top of it, is the only spot that will actually be, you know, permanently affixed to each side. They will be right up to each other, though. So there's not necessarily a separation.
What, what concern, if any, is there in terms of noise between one unit and the other?
So definitely, it's a concern that has been discussed. The two halves of the house is actually set up so that you essentially are going to have a foot of wall in between the two houses. And they are insulated on the interior walls, both sides. There wasn't a sound-dedning insulation or barrier that was put in there. That's not something that this builder partner offers in future units, potentially. But there, there may be some sound between the two. The nice thing with the floor plan, and Jason, are you able to pull up the actual floor plan? So if you see, that marriage wall is considerably thicker, and it's essentially, it's, it's going to measure out at about a foot thick. The central hallway is also going to help with a little bit of a, a sound barrier. So that way, if you've got someone who happens to be in bedroom two listening to a loud TV or music, who the person on bedroom two on the other half might not necessarily be quite as disturbed by it, so. You're welcome.
So the plumbing and electric are separate, on separate meters?
Yep, yep, that's correct.
Now the plumbing is above the slab, then?
It is, yep. So there will be lines that are going to go through the slab to connect to the, the local sources, basically. But the house itself, it basically, that's what's going to be right underneath the floor, up underneath the, the rubber belly. Sorry, I'm trying to think of the right word for it, so.
So you probably have to have heat tape on all of the-
Yes, yep, all water and drain lines will have heat tape. And there is, some people call it a heat tape switch. That is actually not quite the term we use for it. There will be a GFCI that's installed in the utility room that would pop and make the utility room light turn off if the heat tape should fail. So that way, whoever's living in that unit would actually have an indicator that your heat tape not, might not be working and can get it addressed accordingly, so.
How do you do that, on the clearance is underneath?
So depending on the height of setting the house, they range anywhere from maybe 32 to at most 35 inches tall. So a lot of times, you're going to have, we recommend our homeowners put, just like a mechanics creeper, wherever the access point is underneath the home, leave it under there, and then if you need to get up underneath the home or a service person needs to, they'd be able to slide on that instead of crawling across the ground. That's also one of the benefits of doing a concrete slab, a full concrete slab, is that you've got a nice, fairly clean space to work in if you happen to be a plumber or electrician, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, Rita.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Come on up.
I'm Jeff from Phil and Lee's, I'm the construction manager. Just talk a little bit more about the foundation. And the foundation, we're going to have that frost-protected slab. Then the outside, you're going to have like, a rock face block, that you get like from fracco here in town, you know, that ripple. And it's all mortar together, it's going to come up, it's going to touch the bottom. So it's going to have a nice aesthetic look to it. It's not going to be, you know, anything generic looking. It's like Carrie was saying, if you didn't watch us pull them in there, you'd think it was a stick-built house. So and then like on your walls, they come from the factory, with fire protection in them and everything. You know, and then the interior on the bottom, we've got to have separate blocks in there, so they're independent, each house. So we're going to have separate blocks in there with a little bit of a space for fire protection. Then they also insulate the bottom, and they drywall around the walls, so it's all fire-protected. But I just wanted to mention about the block. And I'm sure you all seen them aesthetic blocks, you know, cement blocks with that rock face, all mortar together, so. They'll be all the way up, touching the frame, so. They have a very nice appeal, so.
Do people ever use that space in there by any chance for storage?
Yes, they do, absolutely. You know, each home will have an access panel, you know, metal door or whatever we decide to go with. And a lot of people store stuff on it, or you can have three feet of space under there. And people throw toys and different things under their homes, you know. But yeah, people do store a lot of things under there.
And you don't see any, any problem with putting a separate pad somewhere next to each unit for a storage space?
No, absolutely. That would, you know, whatever you guys recommend, you know, for storage for them. I don't see there's going to be an issue at all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else?
Yeah, I knew, I think that could be a suggestion, Denny, but we're talking zoning, right? This is height and bulk. If it meets our minimum requirements, typically, we shall approve it. And I don't know that, you know, adding cost, adding a separate building to an approved plan for a home, I guess I'd have to check with our attorney on that as far as exaction, and what our exaction limits are on a project. But I think we're, we're pushing it. And, you know, there's obviously going to be a need for storage. I think they realize that. But this, this is not what this approval is for. This approval is for whether or not you believe that this use is adequate for this site. All of the other things will be met, setbacks, height and bulk, the things that we're tasked to provide. And I, I just want to, I guess, throw an error of caution on what the planning commission can and can't do.
Well, we, we required that as a condition for each unit in the run-of-world.
On a plan development with 47 units, yeah, a little bit different scenario, in my opinion. And I'm, I'm not saying that, that that was above board either. It, you know, it was approved, but I, you know, I just want to be careful on, you know, these builders come in here and they want to have some level of certainty in what they're applying for, and what they're being reviewed for. And I just think, I, I, you know, you guys can do what you want with it, but from a staff perspective, I just want to be very careful on what we're trying to exact from.
Well, there's no objection on the part of the builder here? There's no objection whatsoever to having that included?
Okay, I guess I just want to-
They've already, they've already said it's no problem, the engineer here, the building construction engineer's had no problem.
That's fine, I want to be on the record saying that, okay.
We don't know if the owners want to do it.
Yeah, we have to talk to the owners.
Yeah.
Well, because it all adds up. I mean, the construction costs are way expensive right now. And we don't want it to make or break the deal with the sheds, but if it was a matter of, this is the only way we're going to get it to pass, we'll get some kind of a, you know. But it's ultimately up to the homeowners.
We have other ordinances to cover blight and things of that nature, so.
I think, I think it's a good suggestion to do that. And I think if we are not allowed to write it into the record, that's fine. But we have had lots of trouble with blight all through the township. And so I'm sure if we can avert having to deal with anyone with blight, it's better for everyone. So, great suggestion. We'll follow suit and-
Yeah, and I know, talk to the homeowners themselves, I, I can guarantee, but I can tell you that with what they want to put up there and what they're investing here, the last thing they want to do is have a renter in there that's going to-
Yeah.
Junk all over the road and in their yard and stuff like that, I can-
Yeah.
You know, pretty much guarantee that's the last thing they want, is somebody that's not taking care of the place.
And it's an opportunity, it's an opportunity for us to put something different up that might be something other people model after. And we do have a housing issue, as everyone does across the country. We have many people that want to purchase houses. They don't want to be renters necessarily, but many people want to be renters. So, you know, here's an opportunity to do something a little bit different, just like those tiny houses and some of the other things. And I think Mark Township would be proud to be somewhat innovative in the building industry, so.
We don't have a lot of rental properties either.
Not, not where some people live, but there are many where other people live, so, you know.
And this wouldn't be a HUD?
No.
So it actually attracts people who are paying market value rent. And number two, if the homeowner ends up selling it, it could be sold to somebody who lives in half and rents out the other half. But that's their, you know, I mean, it can end up-
Yeah.
In many different scenarios.
Wouldn't that be cool?
It, it doesn't have to be just strictly rental.
So sort of innovative.
Yeah.
A good way to do a publicity piece on housing in the township. Might want to consider that in the future.
Absolutely. Any else, questions I can answer?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:43. Any more comments, discussion, questions? I guess my opinion is that I don't think it would be a good idea to put a requirement to have the storage in there. We wouldn't do this for a single-family home. And I don't think that we should do it just because this isn't a single-family home. And that's not really what we're looking at here, you know, to approve. So I, I guess that's my opinion about what we're doing.
I respect the collective wisdom of this group.
If you want to do a motion, be happy to have one going.
So I motion that we approve the special use permit for the purple duplex at 1953 Warner Street. Heard Jason's suggestion, though, that they move and approve the lot line so it meets the 12,000-square-foot lot requirement. And as long as that's met, we motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll-call vote. Leanne?
Yes.
Denny?
Yes.
Eppeney?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And I'm a yes also.
Congratulations, we'll be in touch tomorrow. Thank you, guys.
Okay, let's move on to 6B. Draft Charter Township of Marquette, Blight and Property Maintenance Ordinance, no update at this time.
I'm keeping these on here as a placeholder. As I understand, Eric brought the revised draft back to you. You guys had a few more adjustments to make to it. As such, we sent that over to legal counsel, however, we haven't heard back from him yet. So we will poke the bear again this week, and we'll see what comes back on our second meeting on the 26th.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Has a comment on this.
I missed the last meeting, but as I do when I, whenever I miss a meeting, I try to review the videotape. And I did review the videotape, I reviewed it twice. And I was very impressed with the thoroughness of our colleagues here on the planning commission to be concerned about certain things not being included in the blight ordinance. And as I understand it, there was concern that the blight ordinance didn't include a specific mention of snowmobiles, mopeds, four-wheel ORVs, six-wheel ORVs, and motorboats. And after listening to the discussion and then looking at the draft ordinance that had been submitted by Mr. Zappa, I think there was a misunderstanding on the part of the commissioners with respect to the language that was in that. And so I would ask to, if you could just pass these down. Leanne already has one. And to what I'm referring to in the draft blight ordinance that was included in the packet for the January 22nd meeting, as well as the one that has been laid on our desk for this meeting, is the definition of junk vehicle. And this would be under Section 3 definitions and Alphabet D. And it defines a junk vehicle as any motor vehicle as defined by the Michigan Motor Vehicle Code, Michigan compiled laws 257.1 at Sigler. So what I've passed out to you is just a cut-and-paste that I took from Google, which is that section. And that defines motor vehicle as every vehicle that is self-propelled. So by definition, a motor vehicle as defined in this blight ordinance includes a moped, a snowmobile, a ORV, a motorboat, etc. So I think that although it was very conscientious on the part of the commissioners to catch, you know, look at that as an issue, it's really a non-issue. And Mr. Zappa's careful drafting and redrafting of this ordinance, in my humble opinion, is perfectly adequate. And I think we could, if the commissioners agree, we could move this along tonight and pass it. Pass it as approved by the planning commission and pass it with a recommendation to the township board that it be approved as-is.
Well, I think there were some other things in there that we were looking at for him to give us advice on or to change, if I remember right. He said it's just that, no, it was just that?
You got hung up on what's a recreational vehicle. And because there was no definition of or inclusion of a motor- of or inclusion of a motorbike, a moped, motos, whatever, in the recreational vehicle, I think you got sidetracked thinking that those things weren't included in here. But actually, if you look at his language, it is, those are, all are included because they're all self-propelled.
Yeah, as long as the definition references the state definition, that would be fine. I wouldn't suggest approving it because it's not part of the agenda tonight. And I will say that, given, and if the planning commission concurs, we can take that, send it to Roger and say, can you give this back to us so that we can approve it at our next meeting if so choose? But I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to have it approved without it being available for, in the packet or anything like that. That's just not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I thought, I thought it wasn't included in the packet. Okay.
That was last night.
Oh, this was left over from last, from the last meeting? I mean, the separate, separate document that was on our desk tonight?
It was probably there because you didn't attend the last meeting, and it was in your mailbox, or?
Yeah, I don't have one.
Oh, okay. So, am I mistaken? All right. It's okay. Whatever. I just want to point out that that ordinance as drafted is okay.
Yeah, I think we had somebody else here that was providing suggestions that the commission kind of caught on to.
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Anyway.
Yeah, that'll help them. Thanks for doing that.
Sure, no problem.
Anything else on the blight ordinance?
No. Excited to get that taken care of. I know that we have it in the budget to hire that limited-term employee for the summer months, and we'll be hopefully ready to go once the board has a chance to look at it and scrutinize it as well. But I think it's a step in the right direction for addressing that facet of our job, and look forward to administering it.
So, I'm hopeful it gets to the board in March.
Yeah.
And then the hiring process can happen in April.
Right.
So, they'll be ready for May, spring season to start work.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no problem with that timeframe.
Okay, perfect. So, that could be the calendar for us, the timeline.
6C, master plan update?
Yeah. So, we've been, I guess, going back and forth with, with our consultants. They are going to provide basically the bulk of the rest of the master plan before the end of the month. So, we're hoping that you'll have a chance to review that at our February 26th meeting. And we've also tried, and I think we've successfully, we only had three steering committee meetings set, but we tried, I, I kind of voiced my opinion to have one more, so that when the future land use map and plan come to the planning commission as a whole, not just the steering committee, that everybody's on the same page. And, and that is currently being drafted, the map is. And so, when we get that back, I want to make sure that the steering committee's all on the same page before it comes to the planning commission. That's the reasoning for that. So, a little bit of a delay, but I think we're still ahead of the game.
Jason, I have a question. Are we can make any adjustments to the future land use map?
Oh, yeah.
We are?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Because I don't remember the specific discussions on, of that in our steering committee meetings.
Yeah. If you remember, we talked about the Long Ear development and that whole area being potentially residential in nature, in some of it, or at least the flexibility.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. That was one area. I don't think there's too much on the commercial side, but more in the residential. I mean, if you look at future growth for residential, it appears to be happening in that area, so.
Oh, I remember now. So, you were, we were thinking about increasing the residential area as you would follow the.
Loosely the phases of their proposed development. So, we wouldn't take the whole 2,800 acres, okay, that they own and put it in that category, but at least the immediate area that they're working in now, so that if there was a rezoning request, that those two would jive as far as, you know, rezoning if they'd be, or if they continue to do planned unit developments, then it would work in that fashion. And then maybe expanding, if you remember, an industrial type of setting out near the County Road 550 and the newly anointed Fly Ash Road, which is now County Road, I think it's XR, but I'm not positive. Anyway, the Fly Ash Road. We, we have had some proposals for different types of industrial uses. And I'm not talking about, you know, manufacturing chemicals and that type of stuff. More along the lines of high-tech industry, research and development.
Diesel repair.
Diesel repair, perhaps, switching. But actually, I can provide you with a quick update on that later. But, yeah, those are the two main focus areas, I think.
And when you say that we'll have this master plan for our review at the next meeting?
Well, I'm not saying that. A, a large, a more of a larger portion of it.
So, we're not going to be asked to approve anything at the next meeting? Okay, thank you.
We're a ways from that yet.
Well, they had said that if, if they didn't have to come up for that community meeting that they had, then they could do another steering committee meeting?
Right, right. So, we would essentially do the public hearing ourselves, or potentially an open house if we wanted to. I think public hearing's fine. We can probably go through it all there. But we're not, you know, we're not amending any zoning ordinance or zoning text. We're just, we're working on the master plan. So, even the future land use map does not affect zoning. All it does is say the township's planning for the future, and in these areas, they're looking at something different than what's there now, based on demand.
Okay. Unfinished business? None at this time?
None at this time, yeah. Kind of a slower time of year, if you guys haven't caught on to that yet.
No correspondence?
I guess the zoning board of appeals did have a meeting on January 30th, just their annual organizational meeting. They did elect a chairperson, Chairperson Becker, Assistant Chairperson Mr. Truscott, and Secretary Graves. And we did pass out their bylaws, and we're going to get them a copy of, well, actually, they elected to just use the online version of the zoning ordinance, so they didn't even want hard copies of the zoning ordinance. So, yeah, that went well, and they won't meet again until needed. Oh, most importantly, Attorney Zappa attended the meeting and provided an update on the Long Ear ZBA appeal by Dr. Peslo, and essentially just stated that the township won the appeal for the stay of the project. So, that means, I think, unless they, Mr. Peslo appeals that, which Mr. Zappa said, that timeframe would kind of run out, that Long Ear could move forward with their approval. And we have met with Long Ear recently, and that's kind of part of my planning and zoning update, but I guess I'll piggyback that on to correspondence with the fact that Long Ear has some minor changes of efficiency. They've gotten rid of their entire engineer team. They have a new engineer team. If anything triggers anything outside of what the changes that are able to be made within the zoning ordinance without having to come back to the planning commission, I will let you know. But so far, they've been fairly minor changes, and I'll keep you apprised as we receive updated plans.
Township Board report.
So, the township board met on February 5th. I was unable to attend the meeting, but on the agenda, it's a little bit slower. Jason's absolutely right. Maybe people are cold. They're just not coming out. They're sick. Yeah, flu is sort of running rampant here. But we did pay all our bills, which is always a good thing. So, yeah. So, the next meeting is a week from today. It starts at 5:30. I invite all of you to attend. And if you're unable to attend, know that we do put the recording out. And like Denny said, he listened to it. And so you can certainly do that and get involved in your township. Yeah, we have lots of good things going on here, so. That's it.
Thanks, Linda. Any rec committee report?
They did not end up meeting last month. And, you know, again, like Linda said, it's kind of the quiet time of year. I'm hoping that, well, we can have our organizational meeting, which would be next week. And then I'm hoping there'd be something along the lines of goals and objectives with regard to recreation that the committee can review ahead of presenting it to the board, or to the planning commission, excuse me. So, yeah, they meet, they would meet next Tuesday at 5:30.
Okay. So, Jason, will you let me know? Because I gotta point it to that group.
You have been?
As the board rep.
Oh, okay.
Tuesday, you think at 5:30?
Yeah, yeah, there'll be notifications.
Perfect. Thanks. Just add me to the list.
Okay.
And zoning?
Right. So, I touched on the Long Ear PUD project and then a meeting with their new development team. The Veterans Home, we may not review that at all. That is going to be federally owned property, and I believe they're exempt. So, I'll keep you posted. I do have a question to Attorney Zappa about it. But George Meister is the design engineer now for their team, and he believes that they're exempt. And, I mean, it would be a load of work off of our chest if that's the case. I will say that I believe that the township in good faith has negotiated all of the things that we wanted way ahead of their final design. In fact, their, their plans are out for bid now. So, again, I'll keep you posted, but I don't believe that they are going to be required to come before us for any kind of site plan review or anything like that, which kind of makes sense, I guess. But if it doesn't, I'll let you know. We'll get it on the agenda. Eric's been wrapping up business licenses. We've been, we're going to meet with our assessing department tomorrow to try to shake out some, I guess, to try to assist them with some things that, that they need to get caught up on and kind of streamline our interactions together. So, you know, zoning and assessing are very different, but they're kind of one of the, not one of the same, but they're, they need each other. Because if we approve a new home in the community, that needs to get on the tax roll for assessing, so that the value and everything that's affected by taxable value gets updated. So, we have all of our permits. We require certain things, but we do not require building plans for, you know, a single-family home or a duplex. We do for multifamily, we require a site plan, or for any kind of commercial building, we require a site plan. But if you're just building a home, we want to see that it meets the minimum requirements for zoning, and that's pretty much it. If we do need to include more of those things, then we need to make some zoning text amendments, which is what we explained to assessing department today. So, we're going to get together tomorrow and kind of clarify some of those things. So, a lot of stuff happening internally in the office, just, you know, that type of, that time of year where you're going through files and cleaning things out and getting ready for the development season. So, I'll leave it at that. Let's see how many questions.
I have a question for you, Jason. So, earlier, Denny had a question for the, before we started the public hearing about if they intended to use this as a short-term rental. And obviously, they don't. They have to apply for that. So, that's a mute point right there because it's not. But it's now, you know, becoming very evident that with too many short-term rentals, that that actually harms, you know, affordable housing, right? It creates more of a shortage than what's already out there. So, what, do we have anything in place to, I mean, is it a per-case basis that we look at these when they come to us, or is there, is it being looked at more long-term now that we know that, you know, I mean, they're just, you know, people want to do them? And I understand why they make more money. But is that something that the township is looking at?
So, first of all, vacation rentals or anything less than 90 days in our community is considered short-term rental. So, that is a special use permit in all of our residential districts. And we have looked at them on an individual case basis. Not only that, but then, you know, the public hearing goes into effect, article goes in the newspaper, notification, excuse me, and then all the neighbors within 300 feet are notified. Of the 33 or 4-ish that have been applied for, I think we have 30 that have been approved. The planning commission has suggested or discussed some potential zoning text amendments to perhaps cap them or provide some kind of spatial distribution of them or limitations, but haven't, we haven't gotten that far with anything yet. I don't believe that we're being overrun with them by any means. In fact, they're pretty well distributed throughout the community, whether you're up on 550 or whether you're in Trowage Park. I think we put together some information for the planning commission a while back that showed the percentage of all available dwelling units in the community versus short-term rentals. And I think that we are under 2%. And the city's kind of like, I think, teetering over 2%. Of course, they have more units total. But as far as the trend in long-term and short-term, I actually would lean on Andy a little bit, because I know in other communities, you have short-term rentals. And I'm wondering if, if you're seeing a trend, or if you yourself have reverted back to long-term at all in some of your units, or if you still think that the short-term rental game is still hot?
I would say it depends on the location. In the, in the city, it'd be probably not so much. Totally dependent on the location, I would say. Like downtown, say, you had a unit like, in a commercial space, I mean, I'd love to have, you know, be able to get, get there in a finished unit like above a business. I'm hoping for that, actually. But yeah, in the township, I don't know if it makes a lot of sense. I talked to a couple that, they converted their home to one. They were actually coming by getting yard rubbish, you know, right next door to that property, and manufactured home. But, but yeah, I would say, yeah, I don't know. It just depends totally on the area. Yeah, it is kind of.
Seems to be so more centrally located to the livelihood of an area or the recreational opportunities of an area?
Yeah. Autrain's a different animal.
It is, yeah.
So, that's where, you know, I have one. But, yeah, the city, I don't know. I don't know if it's really that lucrative for the headache, the turnover, you know?
That's what I'm hearing.
I have a lot, I guess. Let's put it that way. Say, I mean, to do it, and you can't really get a lot. I don't think it's a lot, allow, you know, one person to be allowed now with the zoning stuff, you know, especially in the city.
Yeah.
To make it worthwhile.
They have a cap, yeah.
To make it worthwhile, you have to have several, I think.
Thank you. So, yeah, there's a couple of different ways to do that. Either you put a cap on the amount that you have, and you end up with a waiting list like what the city does. Or you can, and/or you could say, well, you can't have one within, let's say, 500 feet of another one or 1,000 feet. You know, that's kind of one of those things that's nebulous. But those are the ways that you can address it. I will say, though, that we have had zero problems with ours, from my perspective. And that I don't believe that, remember, there was, it was pretty hot and heavy for a while, and then now it's really kind of tapered off. Like, we haven't had any in, I would say, at least six months. So, but yeah, a great point, and it does affect affordability. We're seeing that, you know, around the country, some places in the Sun Belt, there's been corporate entities that have bought in tens of thousands of homes and not thrown back on the market. It's particularly in the Sun Belt region. And they're renting them out. They're not, they're not. So, that, yeah, that affects tremendously. We're not in that. We're not in that particular case, but I would just, you know, make sure that staff keeps monitoring that for you and provides you with any updates that, I mean, you're going to see them because they're a special use permit. But I think that that's kind of, it's, the bell curve is starting to wane on those.
So, Leanne, Eric did give us lots of stuff, and I would guess he could, we have maps that show where they all are, how many there are, who owns them, if you wanted to ask Eric.
That's okay. I just, you know, I remember we had a few public hearings, you know, five, six years ago when I was on the commission. And so, just trying to get caught up as to, okay, you know, I know that this is a concern nationwide, and so that's why I posed a question.
But it's interesting to look at. I mean, I think Bethany and I, yeah, we all found it interesting to see where they're located.
Yeah.
Some are close. Yeah, you should get, that's, yeah.
Fortunately, in some neighborhoods, like Bishop Woods, for instance, against their covenants, they have that. So, you know, certain, certain subdivisions that have, if they have, I guess, homeowners' association, HOA, they'll, they can address that way before we do. Of course, we don't want to, we don't enforce covenants and we only enforce zoning. But just an instant example. Jim?
That's it?
Any questions for me?
Just about the Veterans Home, did you say that it's going to be federally built and managed?
Well, they have a federal grant that they need to utilize in a timeframe. But I, what I'm thinking, and I've asked Roger for clarification on this, if it's a federally-owned project, they don't necessarily have to come before a planning commission for site plan approval, if that makes sense?
It's not owned by the federal government. I don't know if it's not owned by the federal government, but it's the Michigan home for veterans.
Right, but the way that it's farmed in, which then equals who owns the property. But yeah, we'll, I'll clarify for you hopefully by the next meeting.
And they've done these downstate. I think there's two of them that they've already done, so they probably know their rules.
Yeah, but they're, I mean, very early on, and you guys recall this, we, you know, we talked about the importance of maintaining our grant fund and safe routes to school pathway, regardless of the road configuration. You know, we have three-part service through that area now. So, we've got water, sewer, and fiber. So, all of those things need to be maintained, and they will be. They've been meeting with the fire department to make sure turning radiuses are good and, you know, they can get their traffic templates on there to make sure that their trucks can turn around and this and that. So, it's, it's not like they're shooting in the dark as far as a plan goes. It's just that they may not need to come before us. And we have, I hope, negotiated approximately a two-acre piece of property that will now be accessible because of the road reconfiguration that would have been previously landlocked for a potential park property that we can work with them on. There's two nonprofits supplying for grant money, so hopefully that works out.
So, the employees will still be state employees?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. All right. Any announcements? Any more public comment? Any additional comments by planning commissioners?
Well, I'll be, I'll be excited to get the BLIGHT ordinance to the Township Board. I think that that was well represented on our plan that you've been reviewing, the, yeah, the master plan. People want BLIGHT addressed. So, that and housing. Housing is huge, so. We're getting there.
Yeah, I guess, Leanne, do you have everything that you need? You've got a copy of the zoning ordinance and a master plan?
I got it, yes.
Okay.
Eric sent me the, he sent me the first two chapters to look at, apparently.
In, in draft form, yeah.
Yeah, I have read those, so, yep. Up to date.
Great.
I just needed to mention that the second meeting in March will need to be excused.
Are you going somewhere warm?
Maybe we're all coming.
We're all coming.
Good for you.
I'm bringing children, so.
That's really fun.
Meeting adjourned, I guess.
Thank you.
Eight fifteen.